Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm happy to report out on the review that I've had. Just a side note, I know how you people feel on this side now because I was just elected to the Burton Hills Board of Education for my first term. I've been to two meetings so far. I'm already seeing what goes on in that side of the table, so.
Good luck.
I think this is easier, what I'm doing and what you guys are doing.
I worked with two districts for Dave when I was a new teacher at Tamrac and then at Ballson Spa 22, 23 years ago. And he's worked with me in a few other districts doing these same audits and I think he'd be pleased to see just how in-depth he goes and the information he provides. Thanks, Dave, for being willing to work with us.
So I got a phone call back in the spring from Dave. I hadn't talked to him in a couple of years. And typically, when I get a phone call from a superintendent, it's after they're in trouble. Either the state has come in and done a review, or there has been several complaints from parents or financial issues. Both times Dave has called me, he's been proactive. And it makes it a lot easier to do a review when you're not in trouble already. It's a lot harder to do it when the districts are in trouble. So I commend Dave for being proactive. I also want to commend Dave and Chris and Nikki and their principals. He gave me autonomy. I spent maybe 10 weeks, started June 1st. I was in every building, lots of classrooms, met with all the principals, reviewed a zillion documents. And I put together, I think, some of the highlights from that. And then after I get through it, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, okay? Well, let's see if I can do this. Right, can you make it? Oh, there we go. Oops. No, we moved ahead.
Can we back button?
I'm trying, yeah. There we go. So I'm going to look at a few things tonight. The goals that I set out with, what I saw for strengths of the special ed programs. We're going to look at some numbers. And I'll tell you what I think we have and what we can do about it in some Q and A, okay? So what we're looking for is, obviously, we want a high-quality education for all students in a least restricted environment for all students. Obviously, we want to improve academic achievement, not just for special ed students, but for all students. And we want to do it in a cost-effective manner. So what were some of the strengths that I saw? A very dedicated, committed staff providing a high-quality program. No matter what building I went in, what principal I talked to, what special ed chair, the people I talked to in the special ed office, they're all very passionate. They all want what's best for kids. And they take their job very seriously. So I was impressed with all the stakeholders that I met with. Couple of programs, there were several, but I wanted to point out two that I thought were exemplary, in my opinion. The Life Skills Program in the high school, very robust, gave a lot of opportunities for those students to have real-life experiences, especially now that we're beyond COVID. And they, that staff and the model that they use and the opportunity that they give the kids is outstanding. The other program I was impressed with is the collaboration with St. Mary's and the day treatment program with the kids that are severely emotionally disabled. With the services, with the psychiatric nurse practitioner, with the counseling. It's just a nice collaboration. And I know the district is going to capitalize on that and they're trying to expand that as well. So those are two programs that I wanted to point out. All the facilities I went in, all the classrooms I went in, plenty of materials, robust resources for everybody. All the classrooms were inviting. I thought the learning was conducive for children to learn. The other thing that I, and I spent a lot of time on, because it's one of the things that many times you can find additional revenue streams. And Kathy in the business office has done a great job maximizing their state aid for high-cost stack kids, Medicaid reimbursement. I made a couple of recommendations. I know that Kathy's already looked at those for some additional revenues for Medicaid reimbursement. But those things were great. The other one I didn't put on here that I want to mention was, it's very important when you're dealing with special education, is that I looked at a lot of IAPs. And the IAPs are in compliance. IAPs were well-written. Many times when state ed comes in, the first thing they'll look at is the IAPs and try to, a gotcha. But they were in real good shape. I'm going to look at a few more. But I've looked at about 50 of them. They tried to do 10 to 15% random sampling. And I was very impressed with Nikki's office and making sure that CSE chairs have done their due diligence and the IAPs are in great shape. Okay, some numbers. You've got about 2,400 total students. Varies on when you look at it, okay? 480 students with disabilities. That represents about 20% of your total student population, which is 1 out of 5, which is not atypical for the demographics in the high-end rural area that you have. The state likely should be around 7, 16 to 18%. So you're within the range. One number that really stands out, and I've talked to Dave and Nikki a little bit about this, is the number of students that are out of district placements. You've got about 100 students, which represents over 20% of the kids. Typically, you like to be around 5%, okay? Well, there's a lot of reasons, I'll go into later, why it's that high. But that's an area of concern. And they've already started, the district's already started to address that. So to break it down by building. And I'm going to get into a little bit more about the programs and the services. But on the right hand there, you'll see the types of classes in each building. At Park Terrace, they only have 25 kids that are classified at the current time, which is about 8%. And you know that you're, district-wide, you're about 20%. And that's because they only have the special classes there. If you go over to Kingsboro, you're up to 14% because they have 46 kids there because they do the co-teaching classrooms. So you've broken up your K2 into two different continuums, basically. You've got one with just the special classes, and then you've got the other one with the co-teaching model. And if you look at Boulevard, where all those kids funnel into, you have 95 kids, which is about 17%. And you have, you can see many different options for kids. And I'm going to talk about how sometimes having too many options works against you, okay? At the middle school, you've got about 16%, 92 kids. And again, you've got some special classes along with DCT's, direct consultant teacher and resource room. And keep in mind, we don't, you currently don't have direct consultant teacher and resource room in the K2 buildings. And in the high school, you've got about 20%, 125 kids. Now, if you look at those numbers and you'll say, well, geez, that doesn't really add up to 20% total. That's because you've got 101 kids that are not placed anywhere. So that brings up the overall total to about 20% of the population. Does that make sense? So I looked at some of the state data. And I want to preface this with, this is not out of the ordinary, okay? This isn't just Glover'sville. There's, this is very typical of many schools right now. But again, things that you want to be aware of. Participation rate for state tests, we range from 64% depending on the test to 77%. The state target is 95%. They want 95% of all kids taking state tests. But there could be several different reasons that impact it, especially now when you had COVID-19, you have a lot more kids opting out, parents opting out. So that's going to definitely lower that. The next one, you didn't meet your state target, and I think that's why you're targeted school in special education from state ed, because you didn't meet your target scores on your state test, which is hard to do with a lot of kids not partaking in the state test. This one, it's just a little nugget in there, but probably one of the most important nuggets of my whole presentation today. And I'll tie it in later. But the amount of time special ed kids spend in a gen ed classroom, okay? Basically, that's what they're saying here is that 30, only 34% or a little bit over 1 out of 3 of the kids spent 80% of their day with non-disabled peers. So that means they are pulled out either in a special class, or they're out of BOSI's placement, or they don't have the opportunity to be with gen ed kids. As you can see, the state wants you up to around 60%. So you're only about halfway there. But that will tie in here later on some other things I talk about, why that happens. It's not a bad thing, but it doesn't help in terms of your test scores and kids being integrated with non-disabled peers. And then when you look at your academic achievement, your graduation rate really isn't that bad for SWDs, even though it's 53%. That's not horrible. Again, some of that goes back to your dropout rate and your absenteeism rate, which is, you know, district-wide. So what do we have? Well, we know we have a high percentage of students not in gen ed programs, as I mentioned. We know that we have a lot of students not participating in state tests for a lot of different reasons. We know we have a lot of kids dropping out. We know we have kids not coming to school. And we know we have a lot of kids out of district placements, which leads to, obviously, low achievement, no graduation rate, okay? So are we, are we have the financial means to help them? You have been. You're spending a lot of money. As you can see, starting in the last six years, you've gone from $10 million to over $15 million this year. That's a 52% increase in the last six years, okay? So you're spending the money, but what are you getting for it? All right? And that's where hopefully I can help. I call it, obviously, your ROI, your return on investment. You're spending a lot of money, but what are you getting in return? I was in a district the other night, and we were having the same conversation. I did the same report. They were looking at changing their model. And I had a slide, which I did bring tonight, but it's that definition of Einstein, insanity, keep doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results. So it might be a time to have a paradigm shift. So what can we do? We can look at our special ed model that we currently had. If you remember, I mentioned earlier, we use a co-teaching, you use a co-teaching model. We don't use a direct consultant teacher model. I think we have a lot of kids that are in special classes that could probably benefit from more of a DCT resource room model. We want to provide more opportunities for kids to be in gen ed programs. So I think sometimes you have so many options for kids that inadvertently you end up putting them in special classes. And the rigor of the content and the curriculum not being with non-disabled peers, it decreases. You don't have as high standards. Not intentionally, but you just don't have the standards you would have in a gen ed program. Research has shown that 85 to 90% of all kids could benefit from a gen ed setting, not a special ed setting. So one of the things I talked to Nikki about quite a bit is, what can we do differently going forward in terms of the model we're using? She's already addressing several of those things. We're already looking at a DCT model versus the co-teaching model. So that's in the works. This one's a difficult one, several conversations, returning students from out-of-district placement. You almost have a perfect storm right now to bring, to even consider bringing kids back because it's so difficult to hire staff. And it's so, right now, I also know you have a space crunch. So it's difficult to bring them back. So I talked to Nikki a little bit, okay, let's take a look at what can we, instead of sending more kids out, what types of things can we offer to other kids in district before we make that decision to send kids in an out-of-district placement? And as those kids age out of a BOSI's or a private school placement, your numbers will start to drop. Right now, you're trending this way. If we can start to level it off, then to start to drop it. But we've been going like this. So we've got to figure out how we're going to, what we're going to do about that. And then if you change to a direct consultant teacher model and a resource room model versus a co-teaching, you've got to be able to provide, you know, some quality professional development to support the staff as well. A lot of times when I do studies, they say, oh, if somebody's coming in to do a study, they're going to want to cut staff. I'm not here to cut staff. What I'm here to say is, you've got the staff, but I think you have to look at how you reallocate the current staff and looking at a different model, I think would be more effective. So you have the staff, I think you just have to look at how you're going to reallocate it. Questions? I know I went pretty quick, but I didn't want you guys to stay here all night, but...
I just want to say, Dave also provided a more in-depth analysis. I'll share with the board after this meeting, but I wanted you to see this report first, just to generate questions, conversations. Obviously, there's a lot of acronyms in education, not everybody's used to the acronym, so.
That's why I brought them out for you there. But yes, they're doing some really good stuff. There's some stuff that obviously they can do better. And like I said, I liked Dave being proactive and trying to get out in front of it. And the fact that he recognizes that we could always improve on what we're doing. He enjoyed my time. I had a lot of autonomy. I spent a lot of time in classrooms in June. I've met a lot of great people here. And I think everybody has the same goal. But I think we have to look at how we can make it better.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Quick question for you. Do you know the, or maybe Dave, you might know this, the number of students we had in 2017 and 18 that took us $10 million to support? I wonder what number it was?
I do, I do have it. I don't have it with me, but I have it in Nikki's. That was my big minder.
I was also touring the comparison, have other districts seen their cost cost that much or that much?
Yeah, not that much, but yeah. There's a trend in special ed, especially, you know, after COVID-19. Because, and you don't minimize, you know, the impact that they had as well. There's a lot more mental health needs, a lot more instability with families and supports that they need. So, you know, they should be couched in there as well. That definitely contributed to it. My concern is the trend of, you know, going out of district. I think if we can level that off, look at the model, I think we can be in a much better spot. They're not, they're not, it's by no means that I, what I left here shaking my head saying, oh, boy, what the heck did I get myself into? And like I said, I like it when, you know, a district calls me and says, can you help me? As opposed to when we just got out of it by state ed, Medicaid, or parent complaints, and then you've got to try to come in and do some cleanup. This was, you know, clean out it. It was, like I said, I had, I thought a lot of autonomy. And I thought everybody was extremely supportive in terms of allowing me to, you know, look at classrooms, talk with staff, actually talked to quite a few kids as well. So I enjoyed it. I think that there's tremendous potential in there. I think Dave's built a great team, and I enjoyed it.
We're also using federal money to keep Dave on as a consultant working with Nikki and her department. So as we kind of get our hands dirty with this, we're going to have his expertise to continue kind of helping us make informed decisions. But the bottom line is, it's unsustainable for us to see 50% growth in five, six years in the costs. And like Dave said, what's the return on investment? We're sending a lot of our neediest kids out. And, you know, sometimes you're balancing safety. So students who are not being safe, you have to find a place for them because you owe it to everybody else. But one of the reasons we refilled that elementary curriculum director position was, we felt that there's probably some classroom tier-one interventions in the RTI model that we can do better to engage students who may struggle to build a sense of belonging, a sense of self, a sense of confidence, and get, use our current staff more effectively. And hopefully, students will not be pipelined to out-of-district placements that can cost up to six digits a piece.
And I did purposely bring in that piece of it, but that's a great point, Dave, because I think the higher Bernadette with what needs to be done with the specialized reading and the literacy piece, I think is a great move. And she's perfect for it, and I think she'll do a great job. Yeah, that will certainly help.
Any other questions for Dave? Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
We'll continue working with you.
You got it.
Thank you.
Mike, we'll get that number for you.
Yeah, he's going to.
Okay.
Capital project update from Turner Construction. Bob.
Please, right, spread out, right on him.
What's that going to do with the...
Wow, how are you, sir?
Thank you.
You too?
Thank you.
Sorry, getting fed up of my own, sir.
What do you want me to back here? Good? All right, so just wanted to give a quick update where we stand with the current 2020 district-wide capital project. So right off, we'll start with the big one over at Kingsborough. So the soil remediation work, as everyone is aware, got off to a little bit of a slow start in June or in July, kind of a combination of things due to some late SED approval to get a contract in hand, and then to get that contract to the updated information to the landfills and actually getting final landfills to agree to accept this material. As of right now, we have Seneca Meadows, which is out by the Finger Lake in Seneca, as well as Fulton County taking the material for us. A lot of the really contaminated leather scraps are going, being separated and sent to Seneca because they'll take that stuff. Fulton didn't want to take as much of that, so we're working with them to do as much separation if you can. They will continue to take that. Obviously, that is what's helping us progress over there, is getting it close to Fulton and not making a three-hour trip to Seneca. We are still actively looking for other landfills that will take it. We have one that has approved the analyticals up north of Albany. Hopefully, they will again take some of that cleaner stuff. We'll just have to continue to separate that, and we'll be sending those large tractor-trailers down the hall to get to Seneca. We have gotten a good routine with them. It is tough when it's three hours away, but they have, leave early in the morning, come back late at night and fill up. So at some days, we can get two loads out of them in a day. Some days, it's one, depending on the routine that we're in. So that's continuing. If you look at the picture up there, you can kind of see where the excavator is in the middle. We just got over the about halfway point, so right where that excavator is in the top-right corner, he's working his way back from the parking lot back. And you can see all the area that's stripped is the area that we need to remediate. So even with a late start, we got a good jump on it. And like I said, we just breached that halfway point. Right now, the plan is to continue to go as fast and as hard as we can until school starts. There may be some minor stuff. We are in the thick of it right now. The middle of that field is where the majority of the contamination is, and that's where it's the deepest. As we move more towards the creek, it gets shallower, it gets less, it's more of ash and things of that nature than big pockets of leather. So right now, the plan is to continue it as hard as we can before school starts and then potentially have to go into the beginning of school with some of that minor remediation work that's more by the creek. That would be, we'd have an extra, we can look at the phasing plan that's attached in the back of the packet that'll kind of show what we're looking at. We did find that some of the soil remediation, or some of the leather contaminants did go underneath the existing parking lot. That parking lot was coming up either way. We're going to try to keep that for this school year so that the staff had a place to park. But we did buy in the contract the potential for a temporary parking lot, so they will have to give a temporary spot. You see the red area there, up closer to the school, they'll build a little temporary roadway to get up there, and that's where the staff can park throughout the year. Up there, we'll have a fence separating that. The plan always was to do remediation and jump right into the new work, so we'll continue that. In the area that you see up by the school that's already remediated, we'll continue working, grading, drainage, all that good stuff for the actual final new parking lot. And hopefully, that line where it says remainder of soil remediation is closer to the creek or as close as we can get it to the creek. There is some underneath the stockpile of stuff that we pulled back, so that'll probably be the last area that we're into that may leak into school. So far, we have got no readings on our campsite, so there are between three and four campsites. Every time a shovel goes into the ground, it's a community air monitoring station. So ambient is out there every day, anytime. So it's being removed, taking readings both up and downwind at all four corners of the site. So far, we've got no readings of anything that is even close to the permissible exposure limits, even right within that pit. The smell hasn't been crazy bad. Right when you dig it up and you put a shovel in there, initially, it gets you a little bit. If you're right on top of it, dissipates very quickly. We have, if you drive by there, see it looks like a big snowgun. It's basically just like a Fabreeze. It sprays on it, captures the smell, so that we'll use it when needed. If we do encroach into that school timeframe, we'll just be spraying it no matter what, whether it smells or not, just to be dousing that, to make sure there are no issues with that. And again, anytime any remediation happens, we'll have those campsites on, and there'll be constant, constant monitoring of any potential hazard that might be there. We do have a couple contingencies built in. If anything were to come up, basically, if we did hit something that we weren't expecting, we have clean sand right there that would just be backfilled, covered up. If it needs to go into another level with the DEC, we would then deal with that and have to hit that next summer. But the DEC has been out there a couple of times already. We'll continue to get them out there periodically. They are ecstatic with the work that is being complete. They are, you know, just, we have a lot of words for what the district is doing and taking that step forward. They're hoping you guys are setting it up for the next six sites around, you know, or 60 sites, however many it might be in Glover'sville to get remediated. So they are, they are on board. They're happy. They like what's going on out there. I guess that's where we stand as far as that.
Yeah. The necessity to go to Seneca.
Yep.
How's that in the background budget?
So the, this job was built around Fulton taking it. But we were never explicit that contractor, you're bidding this with Fulton. Contractor owed, he got the analyticals, he owes where it goes. So that's a fight that we're going to have to have with the contractor. And I'm fully prepared to have that fight. It would have been great if Fulton, Fulton's working with us, they're taking a lot. Like I said, we're doing a lot of separation. So Fulton's taking the majority of it because there are really just big pockets of leather. A lot of it is just where the leather has, you know, some of those contaminants have seeped into. So Fulton's actually working pretty well to take a lot of that. They're taking two trucks consistently now of the cleaner stuff. But with the Seneca, that's what the analytics said, no, that's what the analytics said we're in bid time, that's what the new one said. So that's a, that's a fight we're going to have to have because we'd never, the district never put in the bid documents that you can bring everything to Fulton. We base it on our budget. When we budgeted the job internally to say, hey, we think we can afford this now because it'll be cheaper for the bid time because we think Fulton will take it all. They worked with Fulton, and even all the contractors that bid this were well aware that it wasn't just going to be a one-off. It wasn't all going to go to Fulton. They'll take it, and hopefully, they'll take the majority of it, but they're going to have to find two or three places. They have, Colony has accepted, but Colony says they'll take one truck every couple of days, so that really doesn't help us too much. But like I said, there was one just north of Albany, I can't think of the name off the top of my head, but they just accepted the analyticals and hopefully, they'll work with us like Fulton does and take some of that, that less contaminated stuff. So, but yeah, that's, it's out there. We have, if you look at the back page of this summary, you'll see that we have a chunk of money, about $750,000 that we didn't have even allocated yet, knowing that we might need to have a little extra here. And that's fully within the overall referendum with the capital project. That's not even counting contingencies and other things we have set aside for the actual, you know, interior construction, roofwork, all that. We have another pot of contingency money to get us through the normal construction. But when we came in under budget, took a couple alternates to make sure we had that extra pot of money to deal with any of these, these things. Like I said, we found that some of the scraps are going underneath the parking lot. That wasn't, we didn't do any test pits in that parking lot. So there will be some additional removals in there. We also found that off the back of the fence in one spot, it kind of juts in where we thought it was going to go further past, and it kind of takes a dive in. So we're working with them daily to get updates in how many tons are going out. First, I'm going to say we're going to have some overages. I'm just hoping it's not too much, but we're just going to stay on them. But as far as the, the travel expenses. My stance is that it's on the contract, and I will fight that. Yep. The only other stuff over, or any more questions on that? I know that's the big, that was kind of the meat and potatoes of this job, right, is to get this, this Kingsborough stuff down.
Yeah, I know, before, we were just going to go to place, and we, we've been very quick. You know, one thing I did, I think I stole the board, I want to put it in a moving update, but our plan is, if we have 70, 70 to 80% of remediation done, and we don't think it smells that bad, they move that fence, they put that parking lot in, I feel a lot, my goal would be to continue soil remediation this fall, even if school's in session, if it's not impacting our school day, to finish that aspect of the job, so it's all new construction to start next year instead of moving into...
Agreed. And hopefully, we're getting a lot of new stuff done this year as well, so that we're setting ourselves up for a good spot in the spring. That was kind of always, always the game plan, get it done. September, as kids come back, we're going into new work. Unfortunately, it looks like we're going to be doing a little bit of remediation. But again, we're going to push like hell to get as much of this remediation done as we can before kids...
Is that structural and dry summers helping us out?
Yes. And like I said, Fulton now is working with us well. We're doing a good job of separating it. They're getting, getting trucks there consistently, so we're moving. If we can get another place online in these last three weeks of summer, that would help tremendously and really, really get a good push here. And obviously, if we do go into school, we'll work around arrival, dismissals, make sure trucks are coming. Trucks that come to Seneca are really going first thing in the morning at 6 o'clock, and[1740.28] they're not coming back until 4 or 5 o'clock at night. So that, that, you know, and even the ones to Fulton, we'll make sure there's no-fly zones when schools are getting dropped off. I know how crazy that street gets out there. We won't let them come in and we'll ship them out during the day. But, but yeah, hopefully, that's a minimal timeframe, but that is our, our plan right now. Just continue right on through. Any other questions on that? All right, and then the other work at Kingsborough is we took advantage of the building being empty this year, went through, took all the ceilings down throughout the corridors that get replaced. We're putting all the ceilings back up. We're not going to throw all the ceiling tiles back in right away. We're going to let that follow the roofwork as we're going to want to put brand-new ceiling tiles in that are just going to get leaked and fall apart like the restroom did throughout that building. So we'll have that done, but everything, as you can see in the pictures, lights will be back in. You will have ceiling tiles sporadically just to make sure the, the grid is secured and squared. I'll have all the devices back in the ceiling, so it'll look pretty much finished. It'll just have some ceiling tiles missing like it, it did before because of all the roof leaks. We also got into the main office, just putting that back together now. We did some preliminary demo work just so we could do some field measuring, get some glass ordered, get some casework ordered, all that good stuff, and now we're putting it back together so they can use it for the rest of the year. Yeah, and then upcoming work, they want to jump over there and get the gym roof done, so we were able to, and as we get through, you'll see a couple of the roofs that we were able to get some material, get ahead on that and start tripping away at some of these, these real problem roof areas to try to get them done before the winter, so we're going to deal with roof leaks for another winter.
Would that be a second shift on, or did Kingsborough gym agree we got on that?
We want, we're going to jump on that next, so we're just, we're going to be finished up at McNabb this, this week. So McNabb was the hot one that, that gym had been leaking pretty consistently over the last few years. So they're finishing up that. It'll be done by Wednesday of this week, and then we'll jump right over Kingsborough roof and try to get that done. So jumping, sorry, anything else on Kingsborough? Okay, jumping over to the high school, the big work there obviously is the bus loop and parking lot reconfiguration out in front of the building. You see a couple, thank you, Osama, for these nice pictures, by the way. Aerial shots, you can see it's starting to, to form up and come together, making connections, forming everything out now. We'll get the curb pavement, sidewalks, all that good stuff formed up this week. Next week, we'll start hitting the gun running, putting the curb in, following that up with pavement and then sidewalks. So the bus loop, and if you look on the bottom half of that Kingsborough phasing plan, you see in the yellow there, that is the bus loop, that is our main priority. Again, because of the delay at the beginning in the SED approval and getting contracts awarded where we were going to use the spring to get the parking lot done and then fall back to the bus loop in the summer, we had to flop that. So we do in the bus loop in the summer, we're going to use the fall to get that parking lot done. So the main concern, the main focus now is getting that bus loop up and running, so that'll be complete before school starts on September 6th. If you look down into the parking lot, you'll see it's kind of divided in half. The first half will be, I'm confident we're going to complete, but I'm going to say we're going to have a couple temporary things in there. We'll have some crusher stone, crushed, stone down at some of the entrances possibly, some of the walkways to get people into the building. Always make sure we have a clear, safe and clean path for them to get into the building. It just might, some areas might be temporarily compacted stone until we can get the concrete or pavement put in place. The area in blue is where we'll fall back to. We'll do, we'll finish that construction, so students and staff can park in that first half in orange or red. And then as we finish that blue area, we'll do a flip-flop so they can park in the back half, and we'll finish up the area in orange. Again, always leaving a form of path, safe, clean form of entry to get into the building.
For, when people begin September, when they bring their kids, what can they expect to do with where their options are drawn?
Their options should be exactly like we wanted it to be at the beginning, only, so if you look, we want them to come around here, right? They would just have to, we'd have a temporary kind of loop that cuts this short here between the red and the, the blue.
So they'll, they'll make a sharp return.
Make a sharp, instead of going all the way around, we'll do, we'll do a, a temporary loop in between the two phases there.
We, I mean, yeah, truth is, the first week of every school year is a lot of that in this challenge, and it takes, takes kind of, kind of work out. Do you anticipate that being more of an issue? Should that something, be something that we pay the community for?
Yeah, I, I think if we work with, with you guys and Osama to get some, some information out there to the community, what it's going to look like, what it's going to be, like you said, I think no matter what, it, it, plus the first couple of days of school, and then adding, even just, just adding a whole new layout drop-off scenario to them is going to add to that.
Kind of excited, it's, it's.
Yep, well, we, we got signs, we got barrels, we got cones, we can put whatever we think is needed to help do that. And again, we'll, we'll say on top of it, day one, if we see we can do, adjust something and make it better or easier or more recognizable of where they should go, we'll do that.
Yeah, I mean, I was just looking at the yellow. If the yellow area is done, you know, we would encourage people coming up Lincoln Street maybe to, to use that loop primarily to come around and head back down the hill that way as opposed to using a certain part of the.
As opposed to coming in there for now. Yeah, and I, and I think we can hit that pretty hard. Like I said, once, we want to get into school. Once school comes back, everyone kind of in the area kind of free up a little bit, right? Everyone, the kids are back in school. Right now is the big crunch, so it's hard to find the, the concrete trucks. It's hard to find the labor to put the stuff down. As soon as school hits, people are going to be looking for places to go, so we can be able to pull them over here and really, you know, get this done pretty quickly.
Maybe I'm hopeful, but my thought is with this easing of that 90-degree turn on Lincoln Street and the fact that people will not be dropping their kids off, I guess I'm doing the north side, right?
Yep.
And that they're coming around the loop and dropping their child off curbside in front of the building, that should expedite the whole process, and people have got it, you agree?
So we're, I hear, where's, where's?
You're going up Lincoln Street and you go, instead of taking that 90-degree turn to the parking lot.
Left.
Yeah, that 90, your right turn, right? Think about the curve, the way it was.
Oh, yes.
Take that turn, and a lot of people are dropping their kids off right there, and then the kids run across traffic, going across Lincoln, the one-way Lincoln Street. So now that's going to be a nice smooth transition, you pretty much just do a nice big loop, and then you have, there's no parking over there, so there's no staff parking, it's thorough, a one-way thorough there, and they come back around, if they want to head back down Lincoln Street to the city, if you drop the kids off curbside, they literally have a whole front of the school building to do so.
So is this, is this, or is this not a bus zone now?
Where?
I thought he said the bus zone a second ago. Is that not true?
This is not a bus zone.
This is not a bus zone.
I think I just called the bus loop, sorry. Yeah, 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 yeah. I'm just delineating the.
Yeah.
No, that's my, delineated the two, one's the parking lot, I call one the other bus loop, but yeah, it's just a.
Parents have a lot of options. When this is all said and done, they're going to have options going to student lines back out or to come all the way down by the turf field where you also see the next little parking lot going in there.
Right.
And I think it's going to work well. I'm hopeful. It's going to be safe, but we're not going to keep going through United Center like we've had in the year.
Yeah.
Any other? In high school, we, we'll get together and make sure.
Yeah, we'll make sure we have a, a good plan.
That we really do our best to tell the local high school families what we feel is the best option for them, safest option for them. I would say that yellow area, that's going to be between.
Yep, that's our, yeah, that's our focus right now to get that, we'll call it the student drop-off area done and complete and ready to go because that's the main focus. Few guys that drop kids off at school, but it's possible to, parents. The only other thing is that everything will be, right now, when school opens and even when we finish other areas, we're going to, we'll just have it all bindered, so it'll be the, the base coats, base, base coat of asphalt, and then we'll come through and do one final top coat over everything just so it doesn't look piecemeal and blend in. We got some areas that need to get milled and repaved to just make a much cleaner feel when you just do all the top at once. It's, it's just like a road outside that the binder is, just a little thicker granules in there, but can drive over it, plow it if you need to, whatever we have to do, but that'll just be, there'll be one final coat that will come back. Hopefully in the fall, if not, first thing in the spring, over, you know, spring break, we'll come through, do the millings and the final paving over everything. Any other questions at the high school? All right, let me run through the other buildings. Over at Boulevard, we're able to, because we replaced the majority of this, the roof over there last year, able to get all the ceilings and the corridors replaced. Those will be 100% replaced, ceilings down, ceilings back up, tile in, it'll just look brand-new and fresh and clean in there. So that's ongoing, and that'll be put back together before school starts. We just got all the ceiling tile today, it'll be dropped on by the end of the week. Over at McNabb, like I said, we were able to get that roof done. You can see in the photos here, we got the scaffolding up, the unit off the roof. You see we're about two-thirds. You can see in the, the bottom picture of the roof with the new white TPO membrane, about two-thirds complete. That will be complete by Wednesday of this week. Thursday, we'll, we'll take that scaffolding down in the gym, and Friday, we'll start putting the ceiling back up, ceiling, lights, everything we put back together before the start of school. Any questions on Boulevard or McNabb? All right, over into the middle school, you can see that they're rendering what the pod are going to look like in the sixth and seventh grade wing. You see we started some demo, and we'll work this week to get our temporary walls up as that construction will continue throughout the school year and be turned over for next school year with the new offices, classrooms, and the redesign of that center pod area. Any questions in the middle school? All right, and then just some of the other buildings. Miko Park and Transportation, not much work has happened over there this summer, just some investigative work. We're hoping that we can get, continue to get roofing material in hand. We're going to jump to Kingsborough next as that seems to be the next, the gym roof over at Kingsborough seems to be the next priority as far as what's actively leaking and giving Chad some headaches at night. And then we'll move into Park after that, if we can get the material in hand, move over there and start hitting Park. And then a lot of the other roofs will fall back into next spring, summer, fall. And then look on the back page, like I said, you see our budget updates, total savings and overruns. We do have just under $800,000 of monies that we, we kind of held aside there to get us through and make sure we're going to get through Kingsborough unscathed and not cut any other things out of the project. We do have a running wishlist inventory we did, similar to what we did in the last project. So as soon as we get through Kingsborough, get through that remediation work, we'll know we'll have the other set of contingency monies to get us through the rest of the construction, so we can look at what, if anything, we have left in that savings and overruns and start looking at some of those wish list items and making decisions. And then issues and concerns, the only things, we talked about both of those is the soil remediation at Kingsborough, keeping that moving forward, and then, you know, some of the high school, that's going to have some temporary, temporary provisions up in that parking lot. Any other questions? Comments, concerns, anything?
As, as, as Mr. said, it's a pleasure working with you, Mike, and you, you know, a little stressful in June with the late approval from New York State and then the delay at Kingsborough, the East High School a little bit. We remain unplacable, and it looks like we're really in good shape come September, and that's really all we care about is being able to run our school.
Yep.
At least not impact.
Yep, like I said, we're going to keep pushing and get it as, get it as good as we can before September 6th, that is.
Thank you.
Thanks, you guys. Have a great night.
Before there's any more questions, just say it after a while, you know, take it a moment, I mean, I'll sort it together.
Anyone here for public comment? Board of Education minutes for our organizational meeting from July the 1st. I need a motion for acceptance. John?
I need a motion.
Kevin, motion, a second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor? Abstentions? Okay. Thank you. Motion to approve the minutes for the Board of Education meeting on 7/1/21. I need a motion. You're standing as well? Ed, motion, second by Mike. All those in favor? Abstentions? Kelly passes. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Welcome those who are joining us from home. I want to start the meeting by acknowledging the sad passing of Mrs. Trudy Van Ostrin, 25-year veteran of the district, food service department, all of which was spent in middle school. She was also the CSEA president for the food service unit, and she was a pleasure to work with. Anybody who knew her, knew that Trudy was a real character. And Kathy and I went to see her last Thursday, and she's in a better place, hopefully with her daughter, Adwell. Sad for her and her family, and we will miss her. I want to thank Dave Mitchell again for his audit and happy that he will be working with Chris and I, especially Nikki and her department, as we look to implement some of the recommendations, because the truth is, we cannot continue doing the same thing over and over, expecting different results. We have to change what we're doing, and that's going to make some people uncomfortable, but the numbers speak for themselves and the lack of, of outcomes for some of these students speak for themselves. So we're going to have to roll up our sleeves and figure it out together, the administrative team and our special education and regular education staff. We have a lot of good people in this organization, so it's just about how to reallocate and meet these needs head-on. I want to thank Ronald Rudio, gentleman who supplied arts, art supplies to our, the high school, middle school art department, and also want to thank Hannahford, who gave us a $3,000 check for our backpack program. Very much appreciate their generosity. This Wednesday, Mr. Rulson and I will be headed to Herkimer to defend the district in the Miko water hearing. Personally, I think it's ridiculous that they're fining us for being out of compliance when the system that is in that school is meant to serve 70,000 gallons a day, and we use 125 gallons on the highest day. And the reason we weren't running all six UV systems is because it heats the water to the point where it's, it's almost dangerous and it's burning out equipment. So it's poorly designed. Their predecessors recognized that and allowed this district to run at a lower volume. People change positions, and we, now that they expect us to run all six, they're burning out left and right. I wish Bob stayed because he could have spoken to this, but the new chlorination system has already been ordered, it is just not installed yet. My hope is to have it installed, so when I showed up, I said, the work's done, you're fining us for something that doesn't even exist anymore. But it will not, it will be replaced as soon as it comes in, because right now, running six UV systems meant to serve 70,000 gallons a day is serving 125 gallons a day, just makes absolutely zero sense. My hope is, and I appreciate Assemblyman Smallin's advocacy for this, that it does not make sense for one public entity to be fining another for something that was poorly designed, not by us, and recognized by our, by predecessors in both organizations. So I'll let you know what comes out of that. I will have the information showing that purchase order's in, that new chlorine system is on its place, so it'll be a chlorinated filtration system, not the UV like. Mr. Rulson is the water manager for the Village of Mayfield, that's what he does every day for a side job for the last 15 years. So he'll, he'll do it for our district, we'll make sure other people are trained as well, something that should have been done a long time ago evidently, and I really don't understand why that UV system was ever designed for that school, because clearly, Miko never needed, you know, the system that's in place there. The city of Glover'sville probably doesn't need the system that's in place there, so it's another example of government waste in some ways. So I'll keep you updated on that. Solar field tie-in, keep your fingers crossed. We're told National Grid will be here Thursday, and they should have been last Thursday evidently, Seamus took ownership of a, of a component that was wrongly installed, but this process[1618.58] but this process has been far too long and arduous. And we should have been producing power quite some time ago. Hopefully Thursday, we flip that solar field and we start reversing the grid, the meter a little bit. So I appreciate the board's patience on that. I don't know what more we could have done. National Grid moves at their own pace. Glover'sville Police Department continues to do active shooter training in our schools. They have hit all of our schools and will now go into the middle school and high school. Now the summer school's over, I should say, they've hit all of our elementary schools and will hit middle school and high school in the next few weeks. I've been privy to some of these trainings and it's, it leaves you feeling better. As I said to the reporter, it's, it's a, something you absolutely hope you never need, but knowing that the entire department is trained, familiar with all of our campuses, and practice makes perfect, and just watching these men and women move and knowing how things went down in Texas, I'm encouraged and confident that in the worst-case scenario, our, our police department is going to rise to the challenge and, and run towards danger and keep going until it's, until it's stopped. So I, you know, it's a dangerous job in this day and age, and I appreciate Chief Clay and his department. They take these trainings seriously. Mike Atherton, our safety officer, has been there with them, offering some of his advice and from his experiences, tactics with state police. So all in all, for safety, it's been a fruitful summer. I also want to discuss the GPD SRO agreement. I think I sent the Board of Education the proposal from the city, which has a thirteen percent increase over the current year's costs. It's due to a renegotiated contract. I think it's been the same for the last three years, Kathy. So, you know, thirteen percent might seem like a little bit of sticker shock right now, but it has not moved in thirteen years, or excuse me, has not moved in three years. So given what I just said about the importance of that position and school safety and how kind of crazy things seem to be sometimes, my recommendation is that the district absorb and agree to that thirteen percent increase. But I want to, you are the fiscal oversight committee of this district, so that's entirely up to you.
Let me add a personal problem, I mean, safety stuff. Got your number priorities up?
Agreed, okay. Good to have this conversation in public, so Kathy, we'll have that in the September 6th? We also have the summer agreement that just got over and last year's agreement. We actually never signed last year's agreement. Wasn't, you just received it, correct? Okay, so all three, so you wonder why we have three agreements. It's gonna be twenty-one, twenty-two school year, summer twenty-two, and then a twenty-two, twenty-three agreement. And the, the number increases will be reflected in that. Okay, thank you for your support of that. I believe it's a great partnership and certainly makes us safer. New teacher orientation agenda is attached, just wanted you to see it. It is next Tuesday, August twenty-third. It's a pretty packed day. We have a lot of new staff members. So this district, I think, has done a good job, and certainly prior to my arrival, of educating new staff members. And our hope is that with the addition of the HR position, we're even be better at it to, to ensure that our new employees feel supported and are aware of what they need to know as they start their, their journey as an employee of Glover'sville School District. But this is for teachers specifically. If you have any questions, let me know, but as I said, you know, the APPR presentation, special education presentation, technology, school safety, and then time to meet with their union leadership and their mentors. I think it'll be time well spent. Any questions on the teacher orientation? Also on, I'm sorry? It's not attached? Did you give them? Oh, I'm sorry. It's not, they, do they have it?
You're the opening day.
I gave it to you, I gave it to you on the sound of the bezel. Nobody has it? All right. My apologies. We will email that to you. It's out of back of mind, just so you know, I don't know what exactly transpired. Okay. So much for checking my work. You do have the superintendent's conference day agenda?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So there's one for two. Matt, five hundred baseball, you're doing all right. You have both days? First and the second day?
No.
I should quit one minute. All right, so I. Clearly, I, I didn't, I thought I did back-to-back and screwed something up and didn't check it. So mine is back-to-back, but that doesn't help anybody else. So we, I think we have a good day. This is still a draft, we have not sent it out to the staff yet, but we will send it out to you. I wanted you to see what we have. Our keynote speaker is Todd Sattner. Todd Sattner is a man from Amsterdam that I've known since I was young, actually. When I was at U Albany, I was, he was supposed to come on a recruiting visit with me and he didn't, but he did play at U Albany, and then he played in Europe for a number of years, and he got into motivational speaking. He's written a couple of books. Todd's very passionate about being your, your best, bringing your best each and every day, being organized and really put your best foot forward. My hope is that kinda he can motivate our staff to, to jump into the new year and recognize that the power of positive thought and the power of positive thinking. We certainly have a lot to be thankful for and we have, it's our, it's come upon us and it's our privilege to help spread some of that to the students we serve, who may not be as fortunate as some of us. So my, my hope is that Todd will be motivational and really, his message will resonate with our staff. We have a number of other trainings throughout the, both days. Some you can't see, but SEL work with San Fini, literacy work, handwriting at the elementary level. There'll be LGBTQ issues. The secondary will be kind of being educated and informed about how to address that. Something that we hear a lot of in our society these days, and it's important that we are aware. And faculty meeting time, time for them to work with their associations, as well as wellness fair for staff. So if you have any questions about the conference day agendas, please let me know. But as I said, it's still a draft. We hope to send it out early next week. Our summer school updates will be provided in the September meeting, board meeting. We wanted that because we didn't want this meeting to go on too long. I wasn't sure how long the construction and special education reports would be. But, you know, by all accounts, it was another fruitful summer and I thank our administrative team for their work to ensure that our students had a fruitful summer. Hopefully, the students are ready to jump back in and the summer slide didn't occur for those students who participated, and we're looking forward to getting everybody back. So thank you administration and staff who worked this summer, and you'll get a more detailed report on the activities at the different levels on September 6th. Hiring update. We still have an assistant director of student support services to hire. Audrey Frank has accepted a position closer to home, so we wish Audrey well. So we, job is currently posted, elementary assistant director of student support services. We also have a recent opening in Spanish and secondary special education. We also have several TA positions still open, but I do want to note that several sub-Aid positions that are on tonight's agenda are people who have pending TA certification, and when that certification is approved, their positions will change. So you'll see an increase in the number of TA positions that are currently open. You'll see a decrease in the number of TA positions that are currently open because the number of those sub-Aid positions will be TAs. And I also want to mention our code of conduct. So this is two and a half years in progress. We started working on our code of conduct prior to COVID. I'll be perfectly honest, when COVID hit, it hit the back burner and we really didn't dust it off until this past school year, when we finally were able to catch our breath a little bit. A lot of people put time into it. I think it's a, a very good document. I think it's, it reflects the changes we've seen in society, laws. I think it, it's more organized and the language is, is more clearly articulated. My hope is to post it. We did have an inclusive process, which you'll see in the document itself. Says every year, we should be reviewing this and keeping it current and that we should put some stakeholders together to look at it. And we did have, Vinnie Salvino was a board member, was part of that committee two and a half years ago. Danielle Graham was part of that committee. Paul Lamontos is a student, part of that committee. So it's been a work in progress. I'm happy with the, what, the product that we have right now. I sent it to the union leadership today. Our hope is to put it on, on social media, not social media, the district website, and have a half-hour hearing, public hearing on it, prior to the board meeting in September. I assume that the community will support it, because the expectations and rights are well-articulated and they're clearly defined. It's a pretty comprehensive document. So my hope is that the Board of Education will approve it September 6th. It could be in place immediately and it could be in effect immediately. So in an ideal world, we would have approved it prior to the start of school year. We'll have one day under our belt, hopefully before the board approves it. So it's not that the other code of conduct has not served us. It's served us fine, but I feel like this one is certainly, again, more comprehensive and up to date. Any questions about that timeline and plan? I sent the Board of Education, I believe, today, saying the code of conduct. Take your time, it's a long document. If you have any suggestions or you see something that you're not comfortable with, please reach out to me and let me know, and we'll discuss. As I said, administration's done a great job. Particularly Brian and Christina have done a deep dive on it and their suggestions were, were good. Any questions? Pretty good on that, okay. And last but not least, on tonight's agenda, I wanted to speak to the administrative changes that are on tonight's agenda. Certainly, the Board of Education is privy to this conversation in the executive session in July, but tonight, on the agenda is a, a lot of changes to our administrative team. And one of the reasons why we decided to fill the elementary curriculum director position was as a result of conversations with David Mitchell, looking at those numbers and trying to figure out how we can best stop so many students being funneled into out-of-district placements or special education in general. And our, our feeling, the consensus is that intervening at the elementary level is the best way to do that and helping students find, believe in themselves academically, socially, to learn some coping skills, and we need to do a better job of meeting those needs and in the classroom, tier-one interventions, general group instruction in each and every classroom. Obviously, we talked about different models. He meant, he talked about different models and we'll have that conversation as we go. Right now, we have our, our structure for the coming school year in place, so we're not changing anything right now. But one thing that we think is of critical importance is somebody leading the charge in elementary curriculum and setting her up as a building principal and then giving her that responsibility was, was setting her up for failure. It's a big job. And our feeling is that this is money well spent. Vernadette is certainly passionate about it and I have full confidence that she can do that job well. That opening led to, obviously, that position led to an opening at Kingsborough. Nick Snow is a natural fit for that position. He served us well last year at Boulevard and didn't, chose not to look to the outside when you have people who are well, who are ready to do the job internally. And that vacancy at Boulevard led to us appointing Kirsten Thompson, the CSC, secondary CSC chair, to the Boulevard AP position. Kirsten's a first-year Glover'sville employee last year, who's administrative certified. She was applying for positions in other districts. She's been an asset, she's proven to be an asset. And one of the things we talked about with Dave Mitchell was, you know, you're kinda top-heavy in special education. You have three administrators, two CSC chairs. They were grant-funded. The feeling was, well, you know what? Those, those positions might not be sustainable for long anyway. Shortage of special education teachers, so the two individuals in those positions, Kirsten went to the administration at Boulevard as the AP and Jen Palmer accepted the position of special education, the teacher at Park Terrace. So we're happy to keep those two grant-funded positions in the organization and feel that they're going to do a nice job in those capacities. And the last piece, which is a change that I believe has already been approved, Dennis Bye to human resources. And Mike Beatty as interim high school principal. Mr. Beatty has worked with Kirsten Thompson, excuse me, Mike Beatty has worked with Christine Elias in the past. And my hope was to have her come in, have somebody she's worked with, that she knows well, to help her in high school. She gets her feet underneath her and should be in a better position to, to have a real hand in choosing the assistant principal at the high school level sometime in November, December. So a lot of changes to the administrative team, but as I've told the administrative team and I've probably said it to the board, I'm as, I'm more excited than I've ever been with the team we have in place. I feel like these, we have very good administrators and my hope is that now that COVID's hopefully behind us, that we can really start picking up on momentum I feel like we had prior to COVID. We have to do it. That's, that's the end of the story. We have to improve the outcomes of our students, and I feel like we have the leadership team in place to help us do that. I appreciate the board's support as we've made these changes this summer. That concludes my report, and I will need an executive session to briefly discuss CSEA negotiations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next to our agenda, we have a number of recommended actions for the board. Items number six point one through seventeen point five three. We're asked to pull to vote on separately, item sixteen point eight. Do I have a motion for approval? Kevin? A second? TA? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you. Item sixteen point eight. I need a motion for approval. Kevin? A second? TA? Any discussion? All those in favor? Signify by saying aye. Any abstentions? Thank you. And now we need a motion to go into executive session. Kelly? Second? Mike? All those in favor?
There was no action.
There'll be no action afterwards. And now a motion to adjourn as well. These are a lot of motions. Motion to adjourn. Kevin? Second? Mike? We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
What's that?
I said, I guess we had a vote on.